The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you perform a roll call, please?
Council members Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natbig.
Present.
Shahadi. Bynum. Phillips.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
Five present, two absent, your honor.
Thank you, Fran. Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on tonight's agenda, and I'd like to say thank you to the Muscatine Fire Department for, I've not seen so many firefighters in this, in this room in some time, so welcome, everyone. We're going to swear in a couple of brand-new firefighters and welcome them to their employment in the city of Muscatine. Joshua Rudolph and Blair Dickey, would you join me at the podium, please? Right over here, gentlemen. As I said earlier, I'll read this in segments, kind of like wedding vows. And when I come to your name, which is at the beginning, you just say your name and you say yours, okay?
Right hand.
I.
Thank mayor.
Oh, you have to raise your right hand, that's right. I always forget that, so. Don't embarrass the chief now, okay? I.
I, Blair Dickey.
I, Joshua Rudolph.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will, and that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
Of firefighter in the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
Of firefighter in the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As here or now after required by law.
That was close enough, guys. Okay, gentlemen, if you'll sign there. And there. You'll introduce yourself to the individual council members?
Ah, congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Are those little ones yours?
Yeah.
We didn't.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Sir?
Welcome. Congratulations.
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 No.
Get to work.
Go to work.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Off to work you go.
Yeah, congratulations. Get to work.
Matt, 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 maybe did you want to do that right now? Counsel, we're going to have a brief, brief check presentation.
Sweet.
What'd he say?
Don't think so. You can have the non-negotiable big one. You can hold it.
Matt, could you come to the chair with our audience? This is all about.
All right, I am Matt Beatty, program supervisor for the Parks and Rec Department, and at this time, we are presenting checks from representatives from the Monsanto Fund, Community Foundation, Central State Bank, and Kent Corporation, in the amount of $22,000 to put towards the lagoon shelter project. We'll be replacing the lagoon shelter here very soon, and this money will cover the cost of that.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much, Chris. Good to see you here. John, Ian, thank you so much.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, if there is anyone in council chambers that has an issue to discuss with council that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium. Give us your name and your address, please. Very good. Item number five on your agenda this evening, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. And, and the consent agenda, consent agenda which includes items 6A through B, items 8A through F, filing of communications, which is 12A, and tonight's bills, as well as receipt summaries and journal entries for February through May. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, that would be Phil.
Second.
Second, Tom. Any discussion, counsel? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero this evening. All right, folks, moving down to item 11 from the city administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing for fare increases for the JARC Muscatine Wilton service. The current fare for this service is $1 per ride, and it is being proposed that that fee be increased to $2 per ride. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will be held Thursday, August 7th, 2012, at 8:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Jeanette, and second Scott. Any discussion, counsel? It's a roll call vote, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting a low bid for the Bond and Schley Pumping Station's renovation project. Two bids were received for this project with a low bid of $297,300 from High Brand Industrial Contractors Limited. In addition to the contract amount, there are engineering costs totaling $23,500, and piping and fitting costs for the Bond lift station totaling $14,427. This brings the total project cost to $335,000. There is $300,000 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, motion by Tom.
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil. Any discussion, counsel?
Just a question for Roger. Was this a project where the variable speed drives were involved? No. No, or that, that was the, the slew then, huh?
That's, that's still with our.
No, that's at the treatment plant.
Our main plant project.
Okay.
Now, this is, we've been working on this project for almost three years now, trying to decide what to do at the cheapest possible price, but these two lift stations are about 60 years old. They're deteriorating quickly, and they're need repair very badly. We ended up, and Mike Nott is here, might have a few things to say, but we've been going through, and we, we started out with the idea that we want these lift stations, once they're renovated, to last another 50 years, but of course, hydrogen sulfide inside of lift stations, you know, eats up piping and pumps and everything else pretty quickly, so we want to make sure we've got good quality items there. So we do, as I said, it's $300,000 to budget, it'd end up to be 335,000 if we award the contract. We feel that without jeopardizing any safety, or really the time the equipment's going to last, that maybe we can work with the contractor and not really eliminate anything, but maybe go down to maybe a, a little less level, not be quite so prominent in, in the things that we're going to choose. We don't know that at this point, so I do have a backup plan. We have $40,000 budgeted for a pickup for the lift stations for this year, but we could make that last another year or two if we had to, so that would cover the cost of this. So I, I don't want to hold it up any longer, and I'd really like to, to go ahead and get this project going.
But we are pretty confident we can use some value engineering to bring that cost back in line with budget.
Uh, it sounds like the pumps have.
Yeah, we, we think we can get those costs down a little bit, as Craig said, get some value engineering in here and get.
And we're not allowed to do that prior to acceptance of the, of the bid. We have to do that after working with the individual contractor.
Any other questions, counsel? This will be a roll call vote, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
And Mark.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution supporting the renaming of Highway 61 bypass to the Douglas King Memorial Expressway. By the way, counsel, that is a change in terminology from what you have listed on your agenda. It's from Doug to Douglas at the request of the family. City council is being asked to support this endeavor. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, motion by Phil.
Second.
Second, Scott. Any discussion, counsel? This also is a roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item D. Presented for city, city council's consideration is a request to approve the grant agreement for the tree obstruction removal at the municipal airport. The city was notified that the Federal Aviation Administration approved the application to remove obstructions, which are trees, as requested by a, a split of 90% federal funding and 10% local funding. The grant agreement will permit the city to award the project with a total federal funding allocation of $50,403 inclusive of engineering fees. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion, counsel? It's a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for painting of the former HNI hangar at the municipal airport. In 2009, HNI transferred this hangar back to the city of Muscatine, and since that time, the exterior paint has deteriorated and is peeling badly. Two quotes were received with the low bid being from Terry &amp; Son Incorporated in the amount of $6,225. There is $6,300 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
Some of those.
Uh, motion by Scott.
Second.
Close one, it's a tie, I'm going to give it to Tom. Uh, any discussion, counsel? This is a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a change order for the Harrison Street Extension Project. The Muscatine Community School District has requested the construction of a drop-off lane for students attending Colorado School. Martin and Whittaker has designed a two-lane configuration at the back of the school accessible from Harrison Street that will allow students to be picked up and dropped off before and after school. The cost for this improvement is $65,400 and will be paid for by the school district. This project is under construction, and approval of this change order will have the lanes available prior to school starting in August. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, motion by Tom, and a second Jeanette. Any discussion, counsel? Also a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve an agreement with the Loisa Regional Solid Waste Agency, in past years referred to as the Loisa County Solid Waste Management Agency, for household hazardous waste services. Previously, the city had entered into an agreement to provide services for the proper handling and disposal of household hazardous materials for Loisa County residents. This will extend the current agreement for another year from August 1st, 2012, through July 31st, 2013. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? Uh, was that you, Mark, over there? And a second, folks?
Second.
Second, Scott. Any discussion, counsel? Also a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for groundwater sampling geoprobe services at the landfill. In the summer of 2010, the Muscatine County landfill was notified by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources that three of its wells tested high for levels of volatile organic compounds, or VOCs. One of the wells has been remedied, and one is being retested. A third well, which is located next to a neighboring property, is still testing high for the levels of VOCs. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources wants a sample taken from the neighboring property to determine if the plume from this well is there. Four quotes were received for the geoprobe services with the low coming from Team Services of Des Moines in the amount of $17,235. There is $15,000 budgeted for this project. The remaining $2,735 will be taken from improvement repairs. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, motion by Tom, and a second?
Second.
Second, Scott. Discussion, counsel? Also a voice vote, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for authorization to purchase a cemetery mower. The low bid for this purchase was submitted by QC Power in the amount of $7,469 for a Model 74915 Toro mower. The old mower will be traded in on the newer mower. There is $12,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Motion by Jeanette. Second, Mark. Any discussion, counsel? Voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for authorization to purchase a park maintenance mower. The low bid for this purchase was from MTI in the amount not to exceed $54,531.86 for a GM 4100-D Toro mower. That must be a good mower. The mower being replaced will be transitioned into the cemetery division and will eventually be used for parts. There is $51,000 budgeted for this purchase. The remaining $3,531.86 overage will be offset by the savings realized from the purchase of the cemetery mower. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Tom. Second, Mark. Any discussion, counsel? It's a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item K. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Parks Department to purchase a stump grinder that will be utilized by Park Maintenance, the Golf Course, and Kent Stein Park. Two bids were received with the low bid from Bobcat of Iowa City in an amount not to exceed $6,446.22 for an SGX stump grinder. There is $6,000 budgeted for this purpose. The $446.22 overage will be covered by the savings realized under the recent purchase of a rear-mounted rototiller for the golf course. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Scott.
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil. Any discussion, counsel? A voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item L. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for authorization to purchase a park shelter. The shelter will replace the deteriorated lagoon shelter at Weed Park. A recent leadership Muscatine group identified the replacement of this shelter as their project for the community. The group worked with city staff to develop a plan and to raise the money for this project. Two bids were received with the low bid from Polygon in the amount of $17,430.80. The total estimated cost for this project is $22,000, which was raised by leadership Muscatine group. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, that would be Phil, and a second Jeanette, I believe, that I hear over here.
Okay.
Any discussion, counsel?
So is this Poly, Polygon group going to install it, or is there the leadership group going to help with the installation?
Les, Matt?
Good evening, Les Dennis, park maintenance supervisor. Yeah, the leadership group is going to be involved with the installation. They're going to coordinate with us when all the equipment comes in and work with us to install the concrete from the ground up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Les. Any other questions, counsel? A voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item M. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve golf course irrigation project design services. Due to the Iowa State Code, public improvements such as this with a cost over $100,000 must use, must use a state of Iowa licensed designer. Two bids were submitted with a low bid from EC, pardon me, EC Design Group Limited in the amount of $20,000. The project will consist of replacing the original 1969 golf course single-row fairway irrigation system with a new double-row system. It is staff's recommendation, city council approved the design services agreement with EC Design Group Limited in the amount of $20,000 plus incidentals not to exceed $1,500. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Scott.
Second, your honor.
Second by Phil. Any discussion, counsel?
Yes, I have a question. Would the, were the design services part of the original budget that we approved in February?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
They've been in, in the budget, in the capital plan for some years now, and they were approved for this next fiscal year, or for the current fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Nick Gal? Okay, counsel, this also is a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item N. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a bio solids application contract with the Hawn property owners. The current contract will expire in 2014. The contract with the property owners has been renegotiated and has been extended through December 2020, which will allow the city to do some long-range planning and to sell equipment that is no longer used. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Uh, was that you, Mark? Okay, and a second, second, Tom. Any discussion, counsel?
So what is, what's the equipment that we're selling? Is that the big tractor and the injector system, or?
We have to keep our, our tractor and an injector that hooks up to the, the tractor itself, and then the umbilical system and the hydrants out in the fields out there, we're keeping that, but we've got a slurry tank and the applicator that goes with that, and the monitoring system, which the city paid $65,000 for at the time it was purchased in 2003, I believe, it was purchased at that time. It still looks like it's brand-new, they've taken excellent care of it, and I think we can probably get fairly close to that same amount back, of getting it back. And we've got two semi-trailer, tank trailers that we use, three altogether, we need to keep one for lift stations, the other two we're considering selling also, because we won't need those going up through 2020. Will put us in very good shape and not have to use that equipment.
Okay, thank you.
That could be your new pickup, Roger. Any other questions, counsel? Different department, but, oh, I see, takes some swoozing to do that. No other discussion? It's a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item O. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to declare equipment at the water pollution control plant as surplus. Due to the extension of the bio solids application contract for the Hawn property, equipment that was used to transport the bio solids to other property and the slurry tank with accessories are no longer needed. Therefore, staff is requesting that the property declared as surplus so that it can be, it can be disposed of. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Uh, I think that was Phil, and Tom, you're a close second. Uh, any discussion, counsel? Also a voice vote, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item P. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the water pollution control plant to elevate one operator's position to a lead worker's position. Staff feels that this proposed staffing change will be the most economical way to operate the plant. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Uh, I'll give that one to Scott, and a second to Jeanette. Any discussion, counsel?
Just confirmation, I recall discussing several staff changes during the budget process, and this was one of them?
This is not one of those items. This is a new item brought with the water pollution control plant. We have five operators out of the water pollution control plant. They're looking to take one of those operators and make it a lead worker. We also have a director and an assistant director. We would be looking in 2013 to take the assistant director's position down to the stormwater, what do we call it, environmental coordinator position, so that, that will offset the cost of bumping up one of the operators to the lead worker position, or the lead operator position.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion, counsel? Voice vote, those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Item Q. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the police department to purchase two Panasonic Toughbook computers. One of the laptop computers will be placed in the K-9 squad, and the other will be used by investigations and other purposes where an additional laptop is needed. It is staff's recommendation, the. an additional laptop is needed. It is staff's recommendation, the low bid from Vatech LLC in the amount of $7,048 be approved. There is $9,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
That was you, Phil?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Scott. Any discussion, council? A voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? Motion carries five zero. Okay, item 15. Under Other Business...
Mayor, we need the communications from council first.
Did I skip over that, Fran? Well, by golly, let's begin with Councilman Lorette. Mark, any comments tonight?
Well, Councilman Bynum isn't here, so I'll be the one to ask. We had some problems with the bridge lighting for the Fourth of July. Did we ever find out what the source of them were?
I talked to MBW manager, Salo Bianco, and it's my understanding that they had a lightning strike that knocked out one of the... Oh...
Controllers.
Controllers. Thank you for the right term. They knocked out one of the controllers, and Musco has since gone out and repaired the damage.
So we're all good.
We're all good.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott.
Nothing, Your Honor, thanks.
Jeanette.
Nothing, Your Honor.
And Tom.
I would just like a quick comment about the status of the West Hill Sewer Project. Are we on pace, or are we behind schedule, or how is that going?
It's smelly.
I think those are those VOCs you mentioned here earlier, but...
And Matt has been working diligently to help us out here at City Hall to get the smell under control. We have our engineer on site, or Randy, I don't know if you have any comments. I think we're slightly behind. I think the original connection that started place right over here put us slightly behind, but once that connection was made, the firm has been moving forward. Rumor has it that there was also in the, they had an accident on the way down with their, was it their drilling machine? That delayed us a couple days as well before they get their equipment down here. But I don't know, Randy or Mike, do you have any comments? And I did get an update from Nancy this afternoon. We've also met with the contractor and worked out some additional parking arrangements for Great River Days as well.
There was a jacking crew coming in from Dyersville, I believe, Nichols, jacking and boring, and they got delayed on a previous project and were late getting to town with their equipment. So that set the project back a couple of days. And then, if you hadn't heard, they broke a water main this afternoon out here. And I think that's repaired and up and running again. But we're pretty close to being on schedule with the project, maybe a couple of days behind. And Nancy wants to see this thing move forward, so we can get across the parking lot and get our parking spaces back. So that's kind of where it stands right now.
Thank you.
Very good. Greg?
I have two closed session items tonight, Your Honor. I'd like to address.
Okay, Randy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
I would comment on the Musketeen County Fair. The Convention and Visitors Bureau has a booth at the fair under the amphitheater. It's about time we took advantage of our county festivities and promoted our city's amenities to folks that are in fair attendance. So if you have a chance and you're going to the fair, stop by and say hi to either myself or Heather Shopa. Jane Dolphett was out there today doing some time in the heat, although today was much nicer than yesterday. I think I lost 10 pounds yesterday. You can quote me on that, Mike.
I did have one other item, Your Honor.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind folks that September 26 to 28 is the annual conference for Iowa League of Cities. If you're interested in attending, please let me know. The mayor and I are currently the only two attending that I'm aware of. So please let myself and Fran know. You should have gotten one of these in the mail, so.
Okay. Item 15. Is there a motion to enter into closed session per Iowa Code 21.5 to discuss proposed property acquisition and pending litigation?
So moved.
Motion by Scott.
Second.
Second.
And second by Phil.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. See, Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Folks, thanks for being here this evening. Appreciate your attending the council meeting.
If you're interested, this is the drop-off we're going to be building.